Okay, the time is 6:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Tara Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kristin Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Cordes.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. We will begin by standing for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with a call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. For our call to the public, I just had a quick item before I opened it up to the public. We had put a pause, as you know, and made aware on Friday on the demolition of the Quinn Building. We have, as we mentioned in prior meetings, had some interest in that building. So I'm going to stop there and proceed with calling our first speaker, Mr. Tom Smith.
I learned a long time ago when I was sitting where you're sitting, it's better to write things down than just speak off the cuff. Good evening.
And Mr. Smith, I'm going to not have the timer set for you, sir. I'm going to just allow you to speak on the side of my field that it's important for public to be able to listen as well as council.
Very good. Good evening. My name is Tom Smith, 192 North Bailey, Florence, Arizona. I'm speaking for myself and my wife of 57 years. Tonight, I wish to talk about the Quinn Building. I've talked to town staff, I've talked to the architects, and will update the plans and finalize the plans on Friday. I believe in Florence and I believe in three points: preserve the past, embrace the present, and plan for the future. You can't have one without the other. Therefore, we are willing to take on the task. There is no profit to be made, only the investment in the three points I made: preserve the past, allowing us to embrace the present, and plan for the future. Can we use everyone's help? Yes, we can. Thank you, Mayor and council, for your time. If there's any questions, Lisa has my phone number. You can call me at any time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.[273.83][273.83][applause] Our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Raybert.
My name is Jerry Raybert. My wife and I own the J.B. Michia residence Saloon Star store on the corner of Church and Ruggles in the Florence Townsite Historic District. I am here tonight to ask the council to make a public report on what proceeded from two suspicious fires in one old saloon that led to the demolition of three historic properties on Main Street and Bailey. I believe the residents of the historic district and other parts of town deserve an explanation. There surely is a trail in public records on how we arrived at the destruction of these National Register properties. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say destructive, demolition is more appropriate. I would hope that in a transparent government, this would not be difficult. This report should include details on several questions. Was the arson investigation ever completed and what were the results? What is the relationship between the town of Florence and Mr. Ritter? Why did this process take so long? Was a structural report ever done and by whom? Who said the buildings were ready to fall down? Who filed for the demolition permit? What was the historic district's final vote on to do it or not? I can only say so much in three minutes, and I'll be glad to discuss this later with any council member. And any discussion that we had should be made public. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I would direct you to speak with Mr. Ben Bitter. He does have answers to the questions that you've asked as they've already been discussed prior. Thank you. And Mrs. Margaret Bouset. I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
Yes, absolutely. My husband says Bossy, but I say Bouset. I'm Margaret Bouset from 17-385 North Christensen Road. We're a part of the Annex Florence. We're having a really desperate time with our roads, and we have been for some time. And we've been dealing with Dan from Florence Maintenance. He's been pretty good helping us out a lot. However, the cement company who's been in charge with taking care of South Christensen Road, Altitude 287, they closed, but they haven't been maintaining Florence, South Christensen Road for at least six months now, and they closed down completely. So they left us high and dry. And right now, we have no other way to get out except for the access road near San Carlos Wash, leads us into the dairy. That's a private road, and that's only maintained partially from the farmer when he does it. And then prior to that, the cement company was doing it. They're not doing it because they're not using the road. So now, we come into a pretty desperate time. Monsoon's coming, and we have no way out when it rains. So we're asking for your help. We've been in touch with Pinell County Highway Maintenance. They're telling us it's Florence responsibility. We've been in touch with Florence Maintenance, they're telling us it's Pinell County. However, I sent you, Mayor, a message, and you told me that you would talk to the town manager, and I believe that someone did come out last week and survey the area. So I thank you for that, and we're hoping that you guys can help us out.
Absolutely. I wish our town manager was here this evening. He did have a prior engagement, but he will be reaching out to you.
Okay, yeah, because we're really frightened at this point. And some of us have huge trucks, but at this rate, we all know about the Colicchi sand. We're newbies. We've only been here four years, but we've already had the experience where we jumped into it and we fell in up to our knees. So you know these big trucks are going to get stuck, and if there's an accident, who's going to help us? And the emergency vehicles can't get to us, and we're all a little upset.
I understand. And actually, the gentleman that's in the red shirt, that's Mr. Chris Alice, he oversees that department as well, so he might have some additional insight that you can speak with him in the hallway if he'd like.
Perfect, because all these people back here in the last row, some of them are residents with us, and we have a little petition here as well. So we're not presenting that as yet, but hopefully we don't have to.
Nope, we're here to help. So thank you for reaching out, and I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.[619.54][619.54][applause] Is there anybody else who would like to speak at call to the public? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the call to the public at this time. Our next item is Item 6A, which is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on rezoning from neighborhood office to highway business B2 for 470 South Main Street, Florence, Arizona. This is APN 202-09-0010, and a second reading of ordinance number 671-19 for discussion approval and disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the highway business commercial B2 zone change located at 470 South Main Street, APN 202-09-0010. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Would you like to speak before I open it, sir?
Excuse me, please, Mayor and council. Just a quick update from your last meeting. The Prop 207 waiver, which is noted in the stipulations, has been executed. That part has been taken care of. We have had one of the neighbors come in since the last hearing just to ask general questions. They're across Main Street from the site, and they were supportive of the request.
All right, thank you very much. And then I did understand technically we didn't need the public hearing tonight. However, it was posted that way. That's why I'm going ahead with this procedure and opening up the public hearing again.
Correct. Since this is the first rezoning that the town has seen in quite a while, I figure it was better to overdo.
Absolutely. We can never overcommunicate, right? All right, is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. With that, we need a motion.
What's the motion for?
Approving the ordinance number 671-19, which is the ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, approving the highway business commercial B2 zone change located at 470 South Main Street, APN 202-09-0010.
So move. So move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'm going to go on to Item 6B and turn over the microphone to our librarian. Mr. Jasper, would you come on up for a moment?
Thank you, Mayor Walter, members of town council, for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the library and National Library Week. With me is Gloria Moreno, one of our librarians, and she'll be talking after me a little bit about specifically the bookmark award ceremony that we do every year to celebrate National Library Week. So this week was founded by the American Library Association in 1958, and it occurs every year in April, which is also School Library Month, as well as the month containing National Library Workers Day and Support Teen Literature Day. And each year, there is a theme for the National Library Week, which becomes the theme of our bookmark competition. This year's theme is Libraries = Strong Communities. And our primary celebration of the week is our bookmark competition, but I would like to first highlight a couple of our regular library programs and resources that we have available. First, we offer free Wi-Fi to the public. All you have to do is bring your device into the building, and you can connect to our Wi-Fi. And that's actually highlighted in the library's monthly report in your agenda packet for this meeting. Our Wi-Fi is the most used of all the Pinell County Library District sites. So the library and community center gets more use than any other place in Pinell County that is where the Wi-Fi is directly paid for by the county library district, which I think is a pretty good bragging rights for us. We also offer eBooks and streaming and downloadable audio and video through apps and programs available through our library catalog page, and databases for public to use on topics ranging from job searching to genealogy to automotive repair. And we offer programs year-round for all ages. I took the liberty when we came in at the back of the room of putting one of these calendars of events for the month of April back there. Lists everything that we're doing this month. We put one of those out every month. This Friday at 5:30, we'll have a guest speaker out talking about climate and moral responsibility in Arizona. Other programs have included movie screenings, local author panels, and participation in such events as the recent Smithsonian on Main Street Waterways exhibit. And we host a weekly family storytime for children of all ages, and a weekly code club for tweens ages eight through 12. And on most early release days, we will also host some sort of family-related program, be it a craft, a family film, or something else aimed at children and families. So with that, I'm going to turn it briefly over to Gloria Moreno, who will talk about the bookmark award ceremony, and then we'll get off the stage. Thank you.[982.12][982.12][laughing]
Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. Florence Community Library has celebrated National Library Week with the bookmark contest for the last 22 years. The contest is open to all the students of the FUSD school district, as well as the homeschooled youth of our community. As you can imagine, what once was FUSD, Florence Elementary School, Florence Middle School, and Florence High School, at the inception of the contest 22 years ago, has grown substantially in size, and the organization of the contest is now an endeavor that lasts months long. Starting in January, we hand-deliver entry forms to all the schools in the district, and at the beginning of March, we go back around and collect those entries. This year, we had a little over 800 entries submitted, and these entries will be available to view inside the library and community center building, we hope, at the end of this week. So please do come and visit and see all the great artwork by the kids. They're wonderful. After that, after we collect them, we have a panel of judges that selects our winner every year, and that usually includes representation from the library board, the Arts and Culture Commission, and either a past winner of the contest, or an active library patron volunteer or person that has worked with us before. This year, we included Community Service Director Brian Hughes as one of our judges because we had a last-minute cancellation, so I do say thank you to him for stepping up at the last minute. And at this time, the winner has been selected for this year, and it is now being professionally printed. And at the night of the award ceremony, then they will be, we'll see who the winner was, so we'll be handing them out then. We end the contest with the bookmark award ceremony. This year, it will be held Wednesday, April 10th, at 6:30 PM, and we do invite you and all members of the public to join us if you'd like. We recognize an honorable mention for every grade level and award a first, second, and third place winner. In celebration of the 20th anniversary a few years back, the Friends of the Library now also provides the grand prize winner with a $50 gift card. While the process is very detailed, it is one of my personal favorite events because of the different levels of partnerships involved. The contest wouldn't be possible without the support of the school art teachers and librarians, who get their students excited to participate every year after year, and we do send a great big thanks out to them. Thank you for your time.
Librarians love to read. Come on over and aside.[1148.32][1148.32][laughter] Okay, so this evening, we have a proclamation, and we're going to alternate. Ready? Proclamation, National Library Week 2019, which is April 7th through 13th, 2019. Whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they do for and with people, and...
Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools, and...
Whereas librarians are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation, and in the world, and...
Whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, and look beyond their traditional roles, and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with the patrons' needs, and...
Whereas libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, providing STEAM programming, Makerspace, and access and training for new technologies, and...
Whereas libraries are pioneers, supporting democracy and affecting social change, with a commitment to providing a equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and...
Whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity, and...
Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week.
Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence of Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 7th to 13th as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what is new at your library, and engage with your librarian, because you, our librarians, are our leaders. Librarians transform. And this will be on display in the library. Thank you so much.[1322.82][1322.82][applause] All right, our next item is Item 6C, which is a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Promise for the Future Month. Before I go ahead with this proclamation, I'd like to invite our representatives from CAC up, give them an opportunity to speak and talk about this amazing program that is available to our youth that is called Promise for the Future.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, and thank you so much for having us on your agenda this evening. My name is Evelyn Kasuga with Central Arizona College, and I also have with me Maggie Dooley, who is the director for our CAC Foundation. And very, first of all, you are the first municipality in Pinell County to take this proclamation on today, and it happens to be April 1st, so thank you for that honor, and thank you, your town clerk, and everything else that she does to help us get on your agenda this evening. But as many of you may know, but there may be some folks who are unaware, the Promise for the Future program's been around since the early 2000, and that was to stem the tide of a very high high school dropout rate at that point in time, and actually, the many years prior. And so the founders of the foundation decided to have this Promise for the Future effort, which actually provides tuition-free education in the backyard of our Pinell County high school graduates. Now, they have to sign an agreement back in eighth grade with themselves and their guardians, their parents, to make sure that they get a certain grade point average, and that they also do community service. But on completion of that, they are able to attend Central Arizona College. So far, since that time, we've had over 4,000 students participate in this program. And this is really the first time we're bringing this to your attention, that April throughout the country is Promise Month. But Central Arizona College, at this point in time, there's other community colleges that are exploring this, we are the first and the only one at this point offering this tuition-free opportunity to our students here in Pinell County. So I'm going to toss this over to Maggie with maybe a few more details about what's coming up as well.
Thank you, Evelyn. Thank you very much for having us in this evening. We appreciate it very much. And one of the things that we do want to leave with you tonight is that we have an April College Promise Month that talks a little bit about why we're celebrating Promise for the Future in April. It really is talking about how we want to celebrate all of the students who have done so well academically, and have really excelled in their ability to reach their academic requirement to receive promise. And also, we want to commend all the recipients and participants who are taking part in this program. And also through the community service, that they have really stepped up to the plate to really be engaged in their communities. So we want to celebrate that also. This year, we're also kicking off a program. It's actually a campaign for Promise for the Future, which is called 25 Changes Lives. And what we're asking is that everyone make an effort to donate $25 toward Promise for the Future through the Central Arizona College Foundation. And to that end, we do have some cards here, because we know that if we can get half of the residents in Pinell County to contribute $25, we can raise $1 million for the Promise for the Future program. And it's incredibly important to us, as well as our students, and I know we're often told, you know, "Don't let Promise go away," and so we want to be sure to create a sustaining legacy for Promise for the Future. Right now, we have a $2 million endowment for Promise for the Future, but it's very important that we grow that to $10 million. So this is going to be a multi-year campaign going forward. There'll be a lot of outreach and fundraising for it, but if we all do our part and donate $25, we can reach the goal that we've set over the next, you know, 24 months to reach a million dollars. So at this point, again, I want to just thank you for having us here this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, or anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us. And let's make sure we all celebrate our students. Yes, ma'am?
How many young people from Florence have participated in the Promise program?
I don't have that total few here this evening, but I know that last year, there were 184 students from Florence who were eligible for Promise for the Future. So that was about 23% of the students who qualified. So congratulations.[1669.41][1669.41][laughing]
I have some questions about the qualifications.
Yes.
Can you explain those in detail for me? As far as, you said there's a GPA requirement. What would the...
Sure. All students have to graduate from high school with a 2.75 GPA, and are required to fill 20 hours of community service. Once they actually enter, enroll at Central Arizona College, they have to maintain a 2.5 grade point average, and enroll in at least 12 credits, completing nine. Right now, Promise for the Future is a, what we call, Last Dollar Scholarship, so students are allowed to take as many credits as they want, and we ensure that they have the tuition that they need to pay for those credits.
And that's open to all of the schools in Pinell County?
Yes. All the public schools and public charter schools.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
The students are asked to sign this promise in the eighth grade. What if a young person moves into the district or the county after the eighth grade? Can they still participate?
Well, in eighth grade, we have a promise coordinator that goes out to all of the eighth-grade classes and talks to them about Promise for the Future, encourage them to sign up for it in their eighth grade before they graduate from eighth grade.
I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. I meant if they come in, say, in the ninth grade or 10th grade?
Oh, they don't. They have to sign up in eighth grade. That's the guidelines of the scholarship. I'm sorry, misunderstood you.
Okay. I may not have made that. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I just, my son is in eighth grade at Anthem.
Oh.
And you guys just visited.
Oh, we did? Okay, great.
Yes, and he signed, and my son was not interested in college at all. He wanted to do something different, and after the visit, he was very excited, so.
Oh, great.
It's a good thing. Thank you.
Well, we try to encourage all of the students to sign up, because you don't know, even if you're thinking of going to a four-year college or doing something else, at least you know when you graduate, you know, that you will have that tuition funding waiting for you. So I'm glad, Monica Vogon is our coordinator for the program, and she is, really gets kids excited about it. So I was glad to hear that. Thank you.
All right, ladies. Okay, proclamation, Promise for the Future Month. Whereas the Town of Florence recognizes the value of higher education and adopted the Education Progress Meter and the Achievement 60 Attainment Goal. And whereas the Town of Florence supports the completion of post-secondary education by its students to reach their fullest potential, grow talent, and improve economic sustainability for the community. And whereas the Central Arizona College is the only post-secondary institution in Pinal County. And whereas the Central Arizona College Foundation created the Promise for the Future Scholarship for the Pinal County High School graduates to earn a tuition-free education at Central Arizona College by agreeing to and fulfilling requirements from eighth grade through high school graduation. And whereas the Central Arizona College Foundation Promise for the Future Scholarship Fund is reliant on contributions from individuals, businesses, corporations, government, and nonprofits. Now therefore, I Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, proclaim the month of April as Promise for the Future Month to raise awareness that the Central Arizona College Foundation Promise for the Future Scholarships provide affordable higher education to our students and urge individuals, businesses, corporations, government, and nonprofits to consider supporting the Central Arizona College Foundation Promise for the Future to create a sustaining legacy for students to achieve their full potential with a tuition-free post-secondary education at Central Arizona College issued this first day, April 2019. Thank you so much for being here and for all that you do with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
This last one. Oh, you can leave whatever you'd like. If you give me an envelope, I'll give you some money. Thank you. Okay, item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Lantus Productions, Inc., DBA Lantus Fireworks and Lasers, including increasing the total contract to $36,000. B is approval of a contract with Zumar Industries Incorporated to purchase various street warning and informational signs, as well as polls and poll accessories for all signage within the Town of Florence limits using the MCDOT Cooperative Contracts Serial 16136-C and Serial 14105-C in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Item C is a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Fair Housing Month. And Item D is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending February 28th, 2019 in an amount of $2,258,477.17. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ben, can you turn the air back on? It's really warm up here. Thanks. New business. Item A, Resolution Number 1692-19, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, Approving and Authorizing Mayor Tara Walter, Town Manager Brent Billingsley, and Interim Finance Director Becky Jimenez to act as signatories for the transaction of business on the Town of Florence banking accounts and declaring an emergency. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is a housekeeping-only item. This is so after our Finance Director Joe Jarvis left. Becky did step in as interim Finance Director, and she will remain interim Finance Director until our new Finance Director Ray Chavez takes his place. So what you're doing tonight is you're authorizing the town to continue with banking by having a signatory. Next meeting, we will go ahead and appoint Ray Sanchez as a signatory, and we'll make that effective May 1st.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1692-19.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bless you. Item B is Discussion Approval Disapproval to modify the existing contract with Apache Underground utilizing pine-strawberry waterline replacement and water facilities improvement construction work. Job order contract as dated October 18th, 2018 for CIP WU-38 waterline replacement in an amount not to exceed $1,314,779.20. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. The item, as described, was brought to council and approved previously. A little background, this is the project that will bring proper fire flows to the K8 school in Florence, as well as some of the additional commercial properties will hopefully be shovel-ready for fire flows. The reason for this change in cost is, as described, the original plan was nothing more than a Google image and estimated quantities. And so we wanted to get the contractor under contract and start the project, and we have. We've completed the first phase of that project, which is actually called Phase 3A. The numbering is very confusing, but Phase 3A was actually taken from the W83 plan set that was called the 12-In Downtown Loop. Part of that project became part of this project. And so in order to get the school, the proper fire flows for that gymnasium to open on time, we kind of started a little bit at risk, knowing that the whole plan set had not been developed yet. As the plan set became developed, we figured out how much pavement had to be cut, sidewalk had to be cut, valley gutters, all the little tiny parts that add up to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. I have personally went back and did all the research and all put all the values in for spreadsheet. There's no increase in prices from the first to the second. What you're seeing is the additional quantities of all the unknowns, vertical realignments, protections, tie-ins. There's just a ton of additional information that was not known. I wish we had done a little bit better job of estimating it, but I'm not really sure what we can learn from this other than maybe taking the conglomerate price and just doing a per-linear foot price. In the future, now that we have a good model, we could probably do that. But each waterline project is kind of unique, so even there's a bit of a fallacy to assume that every waterline project is going to be the same. So nothing's changed, except for the quantities in the project. And so rather than coming back to council at the end for ratification, we felt like that would be slightly dishonest. We came to council to get an approval before we exceeded the expenditure limit today by council.
We appreciate that. Council, do you have any questions regarding this?
I have a question, Chris. The 12-inch line, does that hook into the 12-inch line that we put on Main some time ago?
This 12-inch line, actually, that is being tied in here, is the 12-inch line that we did specifically for the Circle K development. And so that was called Phase 1. And let me be careful when I say that. It was done timing-wise specifically for Circle K, but it has a regional effect. We didn't do a project for one development. As you'll remember, Circle K had a certain financial contribution for that project, and we did the actual improvement. And so this project is tying in at, I believe it's Elizabeth in Collingwood coming over and then down around the school wrapping that as a 12-inch portion of this project. So yes, it's, I'm assuming it's the same one you're discussing.
Yes, thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, I would like a motion.
Make a motion for the approval to modify the existing contract with Apache Underground utilizing pine-strawberry waterline replacement and water facilities improvement construction work. Job order contract dated October 18th, 2018 for CIP WU-38 waterline replacement in amount not to exceed $1,314,779.20.
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benjamin Bitter with our legislative update. Denton?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Quick update tonight again, just by means of update on our distracted driving bill at the state level. That has passed through all of the, it was actually 1165 was the Senate bill. That did not make it out of the House Rules Committee, and so they amended another bill that had already made it through the House, and that bill has moved along. That's House Bill 2318, that today was heard in the Senate Rules Committee after already passing the House, obviously. And so we should expect a third vote in the Senate in likely the next week or two weeks. Again, knowing that the governor has previously stated that he is supportive of a statewide bill, we're positive that we're going to see some good movement there. Just in general, in terms of the legislative session today, I believe was the 78th day of the legislature this year. By statute, they're supposed to meet for 100 days, which would be about April 23rd is the 100th day of the session. They'll likely go a little beyond that, because they still have a lot to work out with the budget. And so we'll see over the next few weeks how they work out the budget, but we're likely to see a session probably going into early May. We do have some, some good movement on the budget, I think, in some of the key points, but still a lot of things to work out in terms of whether they will conform Arizona's income tax with the federal changes that were made over the past couple of years, whether they'll add digital goods in as a budgetary item as opposed to a bill that passes through the legislature. And so a few things that could still affect our bottom line as the town, as all cities and towns across the state. So we continue to remain engaged and active with our legislative group, as well as the legislature as a whole, and we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that any impacts are as minimal as possible and as favorable as possible for the town.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bitter? Go ahead.
Not a question, but I had an opportunity to speak with President Pro Tem of the House on Saturday, and I've been following the bill regarding the Heritage Fund, and he indicated that things are looking very good for that particular budgetary item, and it could be very beneficial for our historic district. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that one.
Sure, great.
All right, thank you so much. Do you have a manager's report this evening?
We are very thrilled that Tom Smith and Lynn Smith moved forward today with saving the Quinn Project. Wanted to reconfirm that we do have a meeting with staff and the Smiths with the architect to go over architectural plans. Town will also be moving forward with the bid procedures for being able to sell that building in a public auction. That will require us to publish a notice for 30 days, as well as post it in three locations. We will continue to have the reverter clause in place in case nothing happens within the next year to make sure that the town, it comes back to the Town of Florence. And we will bring the action item back to council on April 15th, and that will be for council to rescind the authorization to demolish the Quinn Building.
Thank you so much. Item 11 is our department reports. Ms. Judy Hughes, Councilmember Judy Hughes has a question for our community services report.
On your, Brian, on your special events, on the concert series, Concerts in the Park, can you give me a breakdown on the turnout for the concert in the park, for the three that were done, and then what happened on the March 15th rain?
Mayor, council members, Councilmember Hughes, I believe the, I'm going to just estimate some numbers, but the first one, I believe, was the lowest attendance with about 30 or so folks out there, and then the two middle ones in February, I want to say were around 60 or 70. And then we did get rained out on February 22nd, which was supposed to be 10th in Maine. We rescheduled that for May 15th.
March.
Or March 15th. And that was, I believe, a low attendance too, but I think that was also a day where we had some high winds and clouds and things like that, so it just didn't work out too well on that one.
Now, on that, on that, for the, for the series, did you bring food trucks in for that evening?
We did have Peter from Mount Athos with his Ma's Kitchen Trailer Truck was out there, I believe, the first two events. He was unable to be there the third one, and then we did notify him of the reschedule, but I don't think he came out for that one.
Okay. Did, I mean, was the attendance, did people request food? Did they stay around? I mean, I didn't get to attend, so I'm just kind of asking.
I don't, from what I heard, I do not believe that the food trucks were necessary. I think they're nice to have out there, but I don't know if they're enough, nice to have is enough for those vendors to do well at that particular event. Something smaller, maybe some nonprofits, if they want to do popcorn or something like that, would probably be a little bit more successful with that size crowd and a little bit more affordable for folks who are just popping out there for an hour and a half.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding the other department head reports? All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Wall.
Just wondering about the citizen survey, what the status of that is.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Wall. We have all but finished internally in terms of getting that prepared. What we're doing is trying to minimize our costs, and so we're actually matching up the survey that's been drawn with the email addresses that we have for those that are on auto bill pay and some of our utility systems. And that's just taken us longer than we had originally hoped. We anticipate sending that out either next week or towards the end of next week. So we're right there on getting that sent out to the public. We've drawn a sample of 1,300 registered voters that will be getting that, many by email, as many as possible to minimize our mailing costs, but then the rest would be going out through regular mail with an option to fill it out online as well.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Okay, and closing call to the public. This is our call to the council for current events only. And Councilmember Hughes.
Well, I want to congratulate the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for such a great 75th Anniversary GI Parade. It was a great, it was a great turnout, I think, for, not quite sure. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the presentation afterwards. I thought you did a great job. You're to be commended. Mayor, I would also like to see if we can have the following Mayor, I would also like to see if we can have the following two items placed on a future work session schedule, the update of the strategic plan and the update of the general plan.
Okay, and actually, both of those items are already in the works for being put up. Yes, you're welcome. Councilmember Cortez?
I attended the 75th Annual Celebration of the G.I. Bill, and that was so much fun. I got to drive the mayor around, and I tried to dump her off the back, but she held on too tight, so I won't be mayor next year.
You're an excellent driver.
That was great. It was a great event, and it seemed like every person I talked to was just so excited that we hosted that event and honored everyone, and it was a great event. I also stopped by briefly for the 45th Anniversary of the restaurant as well, at a packed Saturday. And then, today, I did attend an event downtown on Main Street in front of the Quinn Building, and was excited to see a change and some movement in that as well. I do want to say, though, one thing, as a community, we have to act as a community. We can't act as areas of town or certain subdivisions. We need to act as a whole if we want to see things change in this Town of Florence. So, it's disheartening to me when people look at me and say, because I live in Anthem, I don't admire, respect, or love this town. And I do. I wouldn't have moved here if I didn't have a heart for it. I would not have put myself up here for public scrutiny if I didn't have a heart for it. So, I do love our historic buildings, and I do intend to fight for them. So, with that, just, just remember that, that we are one group as Florence, and as long as we think of ourselves as old Florence and new Florence, and Florence Gardens and Caliente, and all the other different little neighborhoods in here, we won't make progress. We have to come together as a whole if we want to see this town succeed.
Absolutely, I agree. Councilmember Larson?
That was perfectly said. I love that. So, I'm not even going to try to piggyback on that. That was fantastic. The only thing I wanted to remind people of is that we do have Country Thunder, Road to Country Thunder coming up on April 6th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. down here on Main Street. I look forward to seeing everybody there, as well as the Extravaganza, Easter Extravaganza coming up on the 13th at Heritage Park. So, I want to make sure that we know, the public knows, so that they can come out and join the family festivities.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
I would like to thank Councilwoman Cortez for her eloquent words. I couldn't agree more. We are all one Florence. And I also want to thank the Chamber for an excellent event on Saturday I was able to attend, and I was so impressed with the patriotism that was expressed by all who attended. And it was very heartwarming and very supportive of all our members of the service, and there were quite a few people there who had taken advantage of the G.I. Bill, including my next-door neighbor. So, it was a well-done event, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I'd like to add that, and thank Lynn and Tom Smith once again for stepping up on the Queen Building. I think that's phenomenal, that they would step up and do something like that. I think they deserve a big thanks. And addressing Mr. Roberts' questions earlier about us being transparent about any fires that have happened to these buildings, all of our information is public. Now, as far as the investigation on the, the bar, anyway, Co. Capelli, if it's still under investigation, then of course, during investigations, nobody makes comments, because it's still in the investigation stage. I don't know that it is, but if it is, that's why the information isn't out there, but we don't hold back any information. Everything is out there that we can legally put out to the public, so anytime you want to come in, you've got a question about anything like that, don't hesitate. Don't ask your neighbor. Come down and talk to staff, and they'll be more than happy to show you the records. And I just want everybody to know that we're a very open town on everything we do. And that's, that's all I have right now, other than, everybody show up Saturday evening for the Road to Country Thunder. It's going to be great weather.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes, a couple of things. One, just echo what Councilman Hawkins was saying. I had the occasion to go to the fire chief and ask for a fire report, and he gave me a copy of the report. So, if you have questions, go ask. I'm sure he'll accommodate you. I would like to add some more thoughts of appreciation for the parade on Saturday, not only the Chamber was involved in it, but the American Legion was involved in it. And, you know, we talk about being one big community. It's almost like Pinell County is one big community, because we had people there from Coolidge, Casa Grande, all over the county, and, you know, we need to start welcoming these people and participating more in these kind of events, even in their towns and everything. So, thank you, Larry, for what you're doing for us there. One other thing that I wanted to bring up tonight, I attended a conference in Austin this past week called the Water Now Alliance, and I found it quite interesting. There's not enough time here tonight to go over all the things that I participated in. I've given the town clerk a copy of the zip drive that we were giving for all the presentations, so if anybody's interested in that, I think we'll have that up on our website, or at least access to it in the very near future. If anybody wants to learn more, please come and talk to me. Chris, I've got some stuff for you on it also. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we have had a really busy March, and even going into April, we are going to have a busy April. But busy is good, especially in the Town of Florence, when there's a lot happening. I want to first say, I'm going to go back in time just a little bit. I want to say thank you for our police and fire department, who gave an escort when we had Hertz Donuts come into town. We sold out in record time, 19 minutes. They promised, next time they come back, they will bring more. The money was donated to a local girl who is fighting cancer in our community, so that meant a lot to the family. And it was epic just to see the police escorting the donut truck, followed by the ambulance and the fire truck. Going down this past Saturday, I want to say thank you to our fire department. They put together CERT trainings. So, they started in Florence Gardens, then they came over to the community center here, and then they visited the community center in Anthem as well. I attended the first session. It was full. I want to say there was probably 75 to 100 people in Florence Gardens. It was, you know, they gave out the information, very well received, so thank you for that support. If you were unable to attend and you're interested in the training, please reach out to the fire department. The CERT training is community emergency response training, so this way, if there is an emergency, you are able to be self-sustainable within your area for at least two to three days, is the idea. The 75th Anniversary of the G.I. Bill was very well coordinated by multiple parties, so I want to say thank you for that. It was a rather warm day. However, we had some beautiful talent that presented, as well as the Lewis family, who are direct descendants of Ernest McFarland. And thank you to Tom Smith and his wife. As we've mentioned all along, we want to preserve, and I could not emulate it any better than Mr. Smith had said it before, regarding preserving our past, embracing the present, and planning for the future. I wanted to make sure I didn't mess that up. So, thank you to him. We'll continue to keep the public aware of what transpires. Little League is underway in our town, so congratulations to the kids. Thank you to the volunteers. With that being said, we do have our Road to Country Thunder, and I did note that we have camping in Heritage Park this year. So, if you are interested in a campsite, I saw it in the newspaper, we can, we can camp out right over in Heritage Park. So, that being said, we are going to adjourn to, am I correct in that, mister? Okay. I'm like, I read it in the paper. We are going to adjourn to executive sess-
Please, please.
Shh, 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 shh. I'm sorry, can you speak into your microphone?
You're appointing liaisons to Pinell County.
Oh, see? I would have just adjourned. Okay, so liaisons to Pinell County. A few weeks ago, we had Supervisor Mike Goodman come out, and I had reached out to Councilmember Larson in regards to joining me on that committee with Supervisor Goodman. We are going to meet once every three months approximately to discuss just what's going on in our area and our region, and we'll make sure that that is open. Okay, now for an adjournment to executive session. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. [music]